Good evening. All right. Noting the time and the presence of a quorum, I call the Acton-Boxboro Regional School Committee to order. I am going to start with...oh, yes, tonight is being taped. I wanted to start with the warrants. I'm looking at Dave. Dave's looking at me. That's okay. So we have 18-009 PR dated 10/26/17 in the amount of $986,670.53. 18-009A dated 10/26/17 in the amount of $42,792. 18-009 dated 11/2/17 in the amount of $2,389,156.45. 18-010PR dated 11/9/17 in the amount of $523,860.45. Then we have the payroll gross, P-1809, P-1810V, P-1809M, P-1810M dated 10/26/17 in the amount of $2,410,495.31. And then P-1809N and P-1810 dated 11/9/17 in the amount of $2,505,609.65 for a total And then we also have meeting minutes from our October 30th meeting. So are there any comments, corrections for those minutes? All those in favor? Opposed, abstentions? That passes unanimously. So this is the time in our meeting where we invite public comment for things that are not already on our agenda. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak? Okay. I'm going to turn it over to Bill.
Thank you, Amy. The next item on the agenda is a presentation from Principal Andrew Shen related to RJ Gray Junior High School. And this is an annual report that Andrew presents, and we welcome him. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. It's good to see everyone again. Hope you're all doing well. This report, as Bill said, is an annual one. It actually comes in two parts. One is the annual school report, which is very similar to some of the other school reports that you might get from the other schools, the elementary school and the high school. In addition, the junior high and high school also give an annual class size report that accompanies the overarching report that Marie is going to give afterwards. So when I get to that piece, it'll probably make references to information that you'll probably discuss in a larger context with Marie. What I thought I'd do is just to break things up a bit, I'll give the annual school report, offer a chance for people to ask any questions or hear anything for clarification or suggestions, and then I'll get into the class size piece, just so I don't keep going and going and going. So the annual school report, wanted to provide you just with a broad overview of some of the things that are happening at the junior high school. Certainly, there are things that continue from previous years in good ways, but in addition to that, there's also new things that are taking place, both in terms of programs as well as structurally and operationally. So just a few highlights. We have all new teams in both grades, meaning we reshuffled the combinations of teachers. And so that's something that we do every four to five years. We think that switching things up is a good thing. At the same time, it does involve a bit of change and transition in creating new rhythms amongst these teams, which is something that certainly takes time, but is also, I think, a healthy practice. We do have a new leadership structure. For those of you who are continuing from last year, you'll recall that you supported a shift in our structure where we've added an assistant principal and then have shifted all educator evaluation into the administrative realm. So that's something that we're working on. It's going pretty well, I'd like to think. I think that's going to be something that takes time, and over the course of the year, we'll figure out how to best utilize that model. We also have new classroom teachers, some partially because of retirements and others with some new positions for programming. That includes a full-time ELL teacher, which I'm going to make mention of a little bit more later, as well as a math teaching assistant specialist, supporting some of our seventh grade programs and interventions. I mentioned that position first because it's something that has been useful, but also I remember our report last year, we talked a little bit about our areas of need and intervention regarding the math curriculum. And I just wanted to follow up and offer a follow-up regarding that piece of our conversation. And then we continue to broaden our use of technology. In previous years, we've had each team sharing Chromebook cart, which has been great, and I think that has evolved over time where teachers are developing more lessons and more instructional practices that involve web-based programs and the Google platform. So it's reached the point where there's a bit of an arm wrestle on team for the Chromebook carts. And so we now have two Chromebook carts per team, which has been of great benefit. Some updates with Challenge Success, which is something obviously is a district-wide initiative and something that we care very much about. Regarding the homework and workload thread, one of the developments that we focused on this year was to enhance some of our communication strategies. In previous years, we've asked teachers to maintain an individual course website where they can provide information and updated assignments and scheduling for their independent or individual courses. What we transitioned to this year is actually now having every team maintain a shared online homework calendar. So if you're on A Green, you can go to this one site, and there's a shared Google calendar where all the assignments are posted on the same calendar. So that's available for both students and families. And we're hoping, and I'm getting anecdotal evidence, that it's something that's well utilized and quite effective. The other area, which I'll admit is just an update in terms of a challenge that we face, no pun intended, is our work on school schedule. Just like the high school and some other parts of the district, we're looking at how our schedule could impact the student experience. And are there ways that we can adjust the schedule to meet some of our new goals as part of the Challenge Success work? We started that last January. We were pretty ambitious, pretty committed to it, knew that it was a big undertaking. And at the same time, we'll admit, by June and July, we realized that it's going to take a little bit more time and a little bit more reflection to figure out how best to pursue this endeavor. It's one of those things where I think when you don't change the parameters, we're not changing the amount of time we have in the school day, but when you want to change the time that you have, naturally, if you want to change one arena, naturally involves change, perhaps giving something else up in another. Intellectually, I knew that, and I even said that to the staff, we have to get ready where if we do this, we're going to have to give something up. So we knew that intellectually, but then when we got into the weeds and really realized what that involved, I don't think we'd have done enough pre-work to really appreciate some of the sacrifices that we'd have to make. We would have to naturally give up things that we cherished now to add things that we are excited about for the future. And that's both exciting as well as a little stressful. So I think in a lot of ways, we decided to pause. We didn't want to do things haphazardly, and so we said to ourselves, we really need to back things up and talk about these priorities and talk about the things that we might need to give up in order to gain things substantively. If we don't do that, then we're really, as I said in the slide, we're nibbling at the edges, which isn't necessarily a bad thing, but doesn't necessarily give us the changes that we might be talking about long-term in terms of, you know, a schedule that perhaps has less transitions, perhaps more instructional time for students. So there's a lot of complications with that, which I won't get into, but just suffice to say, we did pause on it. We didn't want to move forward at this time, but we still have a commitment over the next couple of years to really look closely at this and figure out what might be available to the school. One of the areas of our work this year that I really wanted to highlight is our work in what we're calling diversity and equity. And it's, I think, Marie and Dawn correct me if I'm wrong, but I think you gave probably an overarching summary of the district's work in this arena. So hopefully, you'll see some overlap and some connections to the work that have been presented to you about our district's commitment. Really, what we mean by diversity and equity is just really thinking about our work as a school in terms of broadening knowledge and practices that make it so we provide a welcoming and supportive environment for a wider range of students. And that I would put into two buckets. The first bucket is sort of our professional learning, what are the things that we do and understand to engage with students and families more effectively? And the other, what are some practices that we already feel that we can implement that can reflect those efforts and that commitment? And so it runs parallel to the district work. Just a couple of examples. Last year, at this presentation, I'd mentioned, just as a small example, you know, our discussion about just the importance, even if it's a small thing, of valuing the pronunciation, correct pronunciation of student names. And so we talked about that a little bit in terms of the commitment. What we decided this year was an expectation institutionally that at the start of the year with these new teams, that each of them had to come up with a plan for engaging with students at the beginning of the year for how to pronounce their names, to the point where students were saying, I get the feeling that this is really important to you. So it was nice to hear that feedback because it meant that there was an explicit effort by a lot of our teachers. And it's not necessarily about getting it right the first time, but about expressing to students the intention and the commitment to the idea that it is important for us. In terms of some things that we continue to think about, and I'll admit, this is something I hadn't thought about this year until my ELL teacher had mentioned something that she had done in a previous school, is, you know, back to school night, if we have families where English is not their language of comfort, how do we make it so back to school night is something that can be of value to them and really finding ways to provide for translation? She had said that in her previous school, they had high school volunteers who shared languages with families and soliciting and getting volunteers for them. So that's something that hopefully we'll look at next year. This year, thanks in part due to Marie and those in the part of negotiations, as well as the ABEA, we have, every year, we have three parent conference days, which has typically been an early release by the school. Students go, parents and guardians come from 11:30 to 2:30. This year, one of the three conferences now in the evening. And that's something that we requested, and that was something that was worked through as part of the most recent bargaining period, which we're very excited about, just with simply the idea that as we have a more diverse community, we have more and more families for whom the idea of a midday conference is simply not available, either because you are an hourly, your job involves an hourly wage, which if you miss that, then you're giving up income to come to your family, to your students' conference. And that just doesn't feel particularly right. Or for other reasons, you have family commitments, you have other obligations. So this year, we have one of three conferences being in the evening. In addition to that, as you all know, we have a late bus, which very much appreciate the central office's work on that, including JD. And it's something where, again, we have a broader range of families for whom transportation, wanting them to be here after school, participate in after-school activities, extra help, this gives them the chance to consider that without worrying about transportation. We have ongoing professional learning. Just last Tuesday, we focused on ELL instruction, which I'll get into in a little bit, but also we're focusing heavily on our work around gender identity and understanding some of the evolution within our society about how we understand gender, how that plays out in settings like schools. And so that's something that we worked on in October, and we're going to be continuing this May. And finally, last January, so last school year, but continuing for the first time fully this year, we have our junior high's Student Gay-Straight Alliance called Common Ground. The high school's version is also called Common Ground, so we share a name just to provide some continuity. That's been something that started in mid-year last year and has continued and has been a really important and powerful space for a lot of our students, so we're really proud of that. ELL student learning and support. So we have gone from a .4 FTE to a full-time ELL teacher, and that is something that a lot of credit goes to Marie and Dawn. I met with them. I forget when we met, but we looked at some of our projections, we looked at some of the needs of the students coming in and some of the limitations that come with having an ELL teacher that's shared with the high school. And we realized that to do right by the students and the teachers, we really needed a full-time ELL teacher, and so we were able to secure that. That gives us, just to give you a small example, when you have a part-time ELL teacher and you only have so many sections to place students, what ends up happening, or what ended up happening in the past, is you'd have students on different WEDA levels, some in WEDA 1, some in WEDA 4, but because you only have two periods, they all get placed into the same section, and yet they have very different needs. And so simply having a full-time teacher provides for more appropriate placement and scheduling, but it also provides us more bandwidth in terms of the students who we have and the support that our teachers need. In addition to the ELL teacher, I would predict that for the next two or three years, our professional learning is going to focus heavily on ELL instruction. It's something that we, obviously, as you all talked about in terms of our elementary school population as well as the junior high population, is an area of change that we really need to figure out how to adjust to, and our teachers are working hard. It's difficult when you have a lot of students who are not only receiving ELL services, but are ones for whom they have very little English language background, so WEDA levels 1 and 2, and they're in general ed classes. That becomes a real challenge, and how do we develop strategies that help the students and the teachers be effective in those settings? In addition to that, along with students who need language services, it accompanies, sometimes that is accompanied by students who have what's called SLIF, students with limited or interruptions in their formal education, so gaps in their formal education, where not only is language one of the areas of growth that we need to work on, but also just their exposure to certain content areas. So you may have students in 7th and 8th grade who, when they arrive here, are at much lower grade levels in terms of their content exposure and mastery, whether it's math, science, or social studies. So that's an area that we're working pretty hard on as well. And it's challenging. It's hard. We're nowhere near where we want to be, but hopefully, we're making progress every year. Another update, it's not the hugest thing in the world, but last year, I also talked about the Arjury Garden, and I said I was going to make one, and I did. Or not I did, we did, although I want to take a little credit for it. So we have in our courtyard, eight full beds that we started last April, and it's not fully integrated into our school. It's not like it's being actively used by multiple teachers and teams, but we have had some pockets of some projects that hopefully will lead into more sustainable activities that utilize this garden. We've had some moments where the harvest has then been turned into food options in the cafeteria. Our cooking club last year utilized some of the food in terms of some of their projects. We've had some teams participate in terms of the planting of the garden. We also, Community Ed and one of their extended day programs over across the street brought their kids over earlier this fall to help with the harvest as well. So it's just been a nice community program. Hopefully, we'll use it more and more, get kids playing in the dirt, which is always a good thing. Our DC trip is back this year, so we're doing an every-other-year program. The first year, we had 100 students. This year, we have 150 and 15 adults. I appreciate Bill McCalla volunteering the chaperone the trip. No, I'm just kidding. I just thought if I said it publicly, it would put him in a corner. But it's an every-other-year arrangement, and it's something that we're excited about. And now that we've done it one time, you know, there are certain protocols that we can utilize that will help us make it more successful. So we're excited about that. That will happen in April break again. The String Ensemble Program, sort of want to celebrate both at the junior high and the elementary levels. Last year, we had 22 students at the junior high school. This year, we have 33, so double in 7th grade, if you notice on the slide, to 22. The elementary level, my understanding is that there's 130 students who are participating in the strings program. I think it's 4th grade, right? We started 4th grade? So we have a few years for us to figure out where we're going to put these children when they come to the junior high and it becomes a giant orchestra. I'm not quite sure where we're going to put them, but it's a very exciting, it's a nice problem to have, let's put it that way. So it's nice to see that that's growing. That's the pictures of the String Ensemble performing in one of our courtyards. On the horizon, just a couple of things to mention in terms of ongoing thoughts in our mind and work that we're doing. Certainly, the school schedule, as I mentioned, we want to return to that when the time is right. Continuing to have good conversations with Amy Biswais just about technology in the classroom. It's not something that we're worried about. It's not something that we feel lost about, but we certainly want to maintain a sense of, sort of just trying to be in front of the conversation rather than simply just buying technology for the sake of buying technology. Let's think about what is the need and how do we target the work that we want to see happening in classrooms. Student mental health continues to always be a part of our work. Last year, we implemented the signs of suicide curriculum and the screening exercise for all 7th graders. We're going to continue to do that this year. We're planning to do that in late January this year. I talked to Deb Garfield, who's at the Elliott Center, and she received a grant from AB United Way to offer suicide awareness training to community members in the district. And so we talked about scheduling a parent offering for around that time. So hopefully, you know, running, offering different opportunities around the same time can increase the conversation, both at home and here at school. And then, of course, the ELL instruction, as I mentioned, is something that's a big part of our work that we're going to continue doing for a couple of years. So before we get into class size and all of you asking me what's going on in the large math classes, any questions, any thoughts, anything that we want to talk about before we get into that?
Do you think that there's a demand for an annual DC trip? That's my first one. And I also wanted to just ask if there's a funding mechanism for those who can't afford to go but want to go?
Yeah, thanks for asking those two questions. So the two questions were about, is do you think there's a demand for an annual DC trip and also about funding for families who may, for whom the cost may be a bit prohibitive? I don't know if there's a demand, but I will admit, I think right now, selfishly, I'll say it's less about the demand and more about the capacity to offer it annually. It's a pretty substantial amount of work to plan that trip, both in terms of just the sheer numbers, but also every year, we'll have students who have particular needs, whether it's related to medical needs or other needs, and that involves quite a bit of maneuvering. This year, we're lucky, lightning has struck twice, where we have parents who are physicians and nurses who have volunteered to go, which we're very fortunate to have. But even just figuring that piece out and all the medical piece, it's quite a bit of work that really involves a good year and a half. So even if there was demand, my sense is that it probably wouldn't be best to do it every year, just to do it well. Funding mechanism, yes, there are. Through the work that we do with Close Up, which is the organization that we partner with, we do, there is funding that's part of our planning, where we do provide scholarships to students that range from partial to full, and that's something that we do on an individual basis. Mark Lewis, who's the teacher who plans it, sends very clear messages to families just to say, you know, let's have one-on-one conversations where if you feel like your participation in the trip could be made, could be possible if we provided some level of funding, please contact us. And I think so far, we've been able to make it work for the families who have contacted us.
So thanks, Andrew. It's so nice to have this. This presentation's just great. I love hearing about what you're doing and all of those sort of initiatives that are continuing to move forward. Love the garden and garlic over winters. You plant it now and it grows. But I do have a question. Where did it go? Oh my gosh. I just lost my question. Hold on, maybe if I put my glasses on, that'll help me. I just lost it. I'll ask it in the next, in the next thing. Sorry about that.
No problem.
Yeah, it's gone.
Yeah, thank you, Andrew. I, yeah, I'm a little saddened to hear that you have to kind of take a break with the
Scheduling work.
With the Challenge Success.
Yeah.
But I'm wondering, can you just give me an example of what it, something that you were having to give up and that was causing you to...
Yeah, you know, so for example, I'll give you two examples. And I don't want to use these examples to sort of pit one benefit over another, but just to give you an example, right now, we have a period where students who want to participate in band, string, ensemble, chorus, we have a period for that because we want to embed it during the school day. The challenge with that is for every other student who doesn't participate in those programs, we do have to find something that's an alternative. And so that's a period of time that we really need to preserve rather than giving it to another activity or commitment. We could say, well, then let's make, not since you don't have all students participating in strings, band, and chorus, why don't we put it after school? That becomes a real challenge, I can understand, because then it collides with other commitments. And so then that's, and also culturally, I think that's something that, as a community, we haven't really talked about. So I would say that's kind of an example, and I don't mean to suggest that somehow band, chorus, and strings are the reason why we can't do whatever. It's just a, it's just a, it's just a nice example of because it's something that's part of our school culture and something that we value, we would have to potentially, if we gave that up, that gives us flexibility in another arena, but it means giving that up. You know, another example is if we were to try and create longer instructional periods, which was a goal, we could do that, but then what ends up happening with some of the schedule models is you don't, those classes don't meet every day, which, as a side note, I'm okay with, but with some of the other commitments that we have in scheduling, what ended up happening in a lot of our models is, while we made the class lengths a little bit longer, the number of times they met were so, were so much fewer that it became a real challenge in thinking about the arc of the whole year. So if we could go from 48 minutes to 60 minutes, that's great. I think that that really helps teachers with their planning and not feeling like they're going to run out of time. And yet, I think it really went from 180 meeting classes to like 130, 140. So is the 12 minutes extra class worth not meeting 40 times over the course of the year? Which could go either way, but I think for us, there was a real discomfort with just jumping into that without really thinking about it. So hopefully, that helps.
I love the garden. I think it's great. I hope to see you build more beds.
Yeah.
In reference to what Paul was asking, are you continuing to look at the schedule changes? Are you taking a break and backing off?
We're taking a break right now. I think, honestly, there's a couple other pieces where, one, I kind of want to rethink about how we're actually going to re-enter it in a way that hopefully is going to be a little different and might produce a different outcome. Admittedly, this year, which I'll get into, we're focusing on a lot of immediate things, and two, including a healthy number of students in the building. Our ELL work has certainly been an area where we're focusing a lot on things. So I think our attention more immediately, kind of the tyranny of the urgent right now, says to us that let's focus on this piece, and then when we, when we feel a little bit more stabilized, then we can return to that project.
A lot of great initiatives, so thank you. Very exciting. I love the garden too. So I'm thinking, here's a science experiment. If you could have a garden not in the courtyard, but in similar conditions, and then have the strings group play to the garden in the courtyard and see if it grows bigger than in another setting.
Right.
I love it.
That's an idea.
Remembered my question. So it's around the Google homework calendar schedule, which sounds like a really good idea. That'd be a great district-wide thing, wouldn't it? I mean, for the high school, where you've got, I don't know, maybe you'd get into a which teacher gets their homework on the grid first situation, but that's really fascinating. I'd be interested to know later, is this the first year we've done this?
Last year, we did it with a few teams who piloted it. And when they said, yeah, it didn't feel as taxing as we thought it might, I felt comfortable saying, all right, then we're going to expect all teams to do it.
Yeah, it'll be interesting to hear how families utilize it and whether it's helpful, because that seems to be a big complaint from families generally about homework, not knowing who's got what.
I will say, with three children on green, eight, it is amazing. It is fantastic. I'm very, very happy with it. I want to say one thing before you go into...
Class size.
Class size. Thank you very much to the, to the teachers at the junior high that are willing to do the evening conference. I know that it's a really long day. They get here really early in the morning, they have to stay if they don't live in town. So it's greatly appreciated.
No, and thank you for saying that. It was one of those things where we brought it up as one of the things that the junior high was very interested in, and I know that the negotiators represented the teachers association said, yeah, this is the right thing to do for our families. So it's much appreciated by them.
Sorry. Thank you. I just want to be careful. We're not taking a break from Challenge Success.
Right.
Just that we're slowing down, thinking about the junior high's schedule. The junior high has done tons of work with Challenge Success, all-around balance for kids, homework, this homework calendar, et cetera. It is, Bridget, to your point, at the junior high, you have a team with five teachers and 100 kids, and they all have the same teachers. So the high school, it's not the same thing in terms of a shared homework calendar, but they do have assessment, shared Google calendars and so on. Larry's going to be here at your next meeting, and you'll hear about that. But changes in the schedule, both at the junior high and high school, are just so complicated, and they have to start with instructional changes. And Andrew did a nice job of illustrating what we're talking about. If you're going to meet 30 to 35 fewer times a year, you've got to really shift your practice. and they have to start with instructional changes. And Andrew did a nice job of illustrating what we're talking about. If you're going to meet 30 to 35 fewer times a year, you've got to really shift your practice.
Yeah. I just wanted to get a flavor of the, of the challenges that you were thinking with implementing. So, I, I wish you success in implementing the, or in overcoming the challenge of implementing challenge success.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry. Thank you, Andrew.
You're welcome.
I love that presentation so much. You know, really, I want to echo for, you know, with same thing as Bridgette mentioned, and I really hope as Marie talk about that, if high school can do that same thing, like, you know, utilize the homework, the workload, because several teachers really gave the different homework. And what about the, between the teams, like seven red and seven blue, are they share with each other?
They don't necessarily communicate with each other, team to team, about their work, that they sort of operate independently. I would say, given that all of the teachers on each team, they have colleagues in the same department on those teams, certainly when they talk, so all the seventh grade English teachers, when they talk about their work and their instructional practice and their assignments, they're comparing notes. So, I'd imagine there's some commonality there, but certainly not, seven blue and seven red don't necessarily compare kind of the ebb and flow of their work.
So, it's like they have five teams, right?
Four teams each grade.
Four teams, four teams each grade. So, these four teams not necessarily share the same thing?
Correct.
So, is that possible for, for them coordinate with each other, share more, I mean, share as more as possible in the future? That would be really balanced.
Yeah, you know, I think, I think there's a, there's a, I think what you speak to is, is sort of the, the balance of trying to find areas where it's important to have some commonality across the school, at the same time, to provide a little bit of autonomy and independence by team.
I know.
You know, I think one of the reasons why we have these teams is to provide those five teachers with an opportunity to create kind of a rhythm that they think works for not only their individual classes, but for them sort of as a whole. My feeling is as long as there are certain benchmarks and certain experiences that echo throughout all the schools, that's my priority. How it may play out kind of week to week or day to day, I'm okay with sort of teams and teachers being a little bit different.
Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Class size report. Here we go. So, just like every year, the class size report to provide you a bit of an enrollment overview, not only in terms of overall enrollment at the junior high school, but how it plays out in terms of teams and class sizes. Math levels, and we talk about math levels because that's the one class on team that is leveled, so there is some variance there, although then it influences class sizes in other classes. And certainly, some trends within the population in terms of our ELL population, students receiving special education services, so on and so forth. Overall enrollment trends, this year, as of October 1st, we were at 964 students. As of yesterday, we are at 970 students. We have, we have a lot of kids. Our, the original projection was around 950, so you know, credit to those who do the projections. Fairly close, but certainly, we are above where we were at. We peaked several years ago at 1,003 students, and then we dipped a few years ago at the high 800s. The projection right now is to dip a bit down into the, to 930 next year, and then to the high 800s, and then to hover in the low 900 area for a few years. This is very different. Marie likes to joke that when she sent me the enrollment projections updated, within 30 seconds, I called her and said, really? Because as you all know, the narrative is very different now. We were expecting sort of a natural relief from the enrollment projections where I believe originally, in seven or eight years, we were projected to be in the low 700s. And so, we were really anticipating what does that mean in a different lens of enrollment and staffing and services. So, the fact that we are at the very best right now going to hover, and then potentially, depending on if this trend continues to shift, perhaps will be increasing from what we currently project, is some new thinking for us, and it's something that kind of wrestling with right now and wondering how we want to be responsive and thoughtful about that. So, right now, as you can see from this chart, we're at 964. The projections are kind of in that area. I do worry a little bit that if we're at 928, but really, if we end up increasing, that if we're closer to 950, I'm trying to think a little bit about what that means next year, and how do we soften the edges a bit in terms of addressing the fact that we'll continue to have a high population of students. I put in orange that one class in eighth grade next year is even if you have fewer students than this year, the projection for eighth grade is going to be close to 500 students. So, seventh grade will have some relief, eighth grade will be, is projected to be quite high. Team sizes this year, if you were to take the team sizes which range between 116 and 124 across the school and divide by five, those are the averages that you would, oh, those are the team sizes that you would get, and then you would get these team averages. That obviously is not necessarily the case because we have math levels, and so you're going to have different sizes, which then impact other class sizes. But that would be sort of the target average if you were to simply divide the team size by five. Because we have two math levels in seventh grade and three math levels in eighth grade, we do need to distribute those sections based on the students in front of us. So, every year is going to be a little bit different based not only on the teacher recommendations, but also the parent decisions to accept those recommendations or override. And so, once we get those numbers, we decide the number of sections, then we have more students move in the summer, and then depending on where they place, you know, influences the sizes of those classes. You know, I certainly highlight this year, we're, we, because of the size of our overall student population, we do have a number of sections in seventh grade in our extended math level. Five sections of classes, 25 to 27 students, and four sections that are between 28 and 30 students. So, it's not something that we love to have, but it's certainly something that's a bit of a reality right now. In eighth grade, a similar storyline, you have 20 sections overall, five, five math classes per team, four teams, 20 sections. We do have six sections between 26 and 29, one section, it's currently above 30 students. I think it's 31 right now, it could be 30. So, again, it's tough. There are some limitations to what we can do because the, the team model is a wonderful thing for middle school, and at the same time, it does provide some limitations. We can't simply just add a math teacher. You'd have to add a whole team, which if, if you want to do that, by the way, it'd be wonderful. But realistically, that's, you know, that's a, that's a fairly ambitious endeavor. So, it does provide some limitations in terms of how we can try and mitigate some of the, some of the high enrollment. Class size is on teams. Again, this just gives you an example that because when you start to distribute students in math classes differently, there's a trickle effect. And so, it's not just math teachers who are experiencing some, some higher class sizes. You have, as just an example here, you know, your social studies, your English, and your science at 26, 26, and 27, just as one example. And then certainly, then there's fewer that corresponds with that at the same period. So, your Spanish class, for example, would have 16 or 20 students during that period. Our exploratory classes, again, they struggle a bit because we have four exploratories in each grade, and so you take the entire team and divide by four instead. And so, that's where you're going to have some fairly large exploratory class sizes, which I've highlighted there. It does get mitigated a bit where if you have students who sometimes are receiving academic support center services, students who are on IEPs, those will be times when they are receiving services. So, that does reduce the number of students who are in exploratory at a time, so that helps a bit. But again, we are experiencing some pretty, pretty high class sizes. And just to be clear, we, we talked about this last year. We knew that this year, we were going to have to hunker down a bit. And, and for us, the feeling was, all right, if it's a one-year blip, and then we go back down to that sort of decline, okay, then let's, let's benefit from that natural relief. So, that's where, depending on how things transition, a different conversation might need to be had about sort of long-term and short-term planning. So, enrollment trends. Enrollment is consistently in the mid 900s, if it is. It could present a number of challenges, and that's things that we'll have to think about over time and see how the trends go. And also, just wondering, could current patterns shift again? You know, it seems to be kind of going this way. Hopefully, it's stopped and it's sort of settled down, but if for some reason, the projections shift again, then I think it begs for a different conversation. Terms of some of our specific populations, just getting back to our English language learner students, this gives you sort of a, a trend over the past couple of years where this year, we have 20 students who are receiving ELL instruction, which is very different from previous years in terms of 2013, 2014. In addition, the students themselves within that cohort of 20, we have a number of students who are in LEEDA levels one through three, so certainly, their needs are a bit more intense than students who might be in levels four through six. And so, again, the full-time ELL teacher is a, is a huge addition for us, and we're very grateful for that. Terms of special education services, this is something we've talked about for the past couple of years, especially as it related to some staffing plans that the school committee had implemented in anticipation of this. Some positive news is we had projected, as you all know, a pretty substantial increase in the number of students at the junior high school who were receiving services within special education. That trend has continued, but has not seen the increase that we were bracing for. So, for example, in this particular eighth grade class, there was a decrease from last October 1st, I think partially due to the fact that a number of students in seventh grade were dismissed and no longer required special ed services. The incoming class, the seventh grade class, there was a decrease as well. So, overall, you can see that from last year to this year, we still did increase to 152 students, which long-term is still part of the projection that we anticipated where right now, we're in a zone that's very different from four, five, six years ago, where we tended to be in the 120s. But it's certainly lower than what we thought at this time last year, which we thought we were going to be in the 160s range at the start of October 1st. The number's still right now, in terms of current fourth, fifth, and sixth graders, suggests that this is still an arena where we have to keep monitoring. The good news from all of this, I'll skip that one, is that we prepared for this, the school committee and the junior high school. We, we changed the model for learning centers where we have the staffing to account for that increase. And so, I do feel comfortable about the services and the staffing that we provided, that we are providing this year, and feel very comfortable with that. Areas to monitor, I feel like a broken record, but hopefully, people sort of appreciate kind of returning to it, is that we want to really pay attention to the needs and the impact of having students with varied backgrounds in terms of their learning. So, non-traditional schooling backgrounds, when you have two students in your math class who really have substantially different experiences with math, for example, that really does have quite a significant impact on a class that also has 28 kids in the class. So, you know, that's an arena that we just need to figure out how to be more thoughtful in supporting teachers and students and that. Team sizes, obviously, is, you know, in terms of a teacher's individual team caseload, being around 125, 130, it's, it's tough. And then certainly, the class sizes of our exploratory classes are areas that we want to monitor. So, that's sort of class sizes in a nutshell. If anybody has any questions or observations they'd like to make.
All right, Eric.
So, you just said this, but you said it pretty subtly.
Yeah.
So, I'm going to emphasize it. When we help the students who have limited or interrupted instruction, it helps all the kids in the classroom.
It does.
So, it's not just those kids, because it can be challenging when, you know, students have missed certain material because they're in transitions and that.
Yeah. No, thank you for saying that. I think universalizing good practices for certain students is good for all students.
Yeah, Tessa?
Could you just clarify the difference between, I understand that academic support centers for regular education.
Sure.
But without a formalized plan, you have to plan for that, right? I mean, like an IEP or a 504 where you're going into a learning center.
Yeah.
There would be a formal process of, you know, arranging a schedule and stuff like that. So, I just wanted to understand the difference between the two.
Sure. The academic support center, as Tessa said, is, is a general ed service for students who need additional support in a range of areas. It could be organizational, it could be observations by teachers who feel like just the student just could use a bit more adult oversight in terms of helping them sort of plan and strategize for a particular class or just for their day. There is some formality to the academic support center in the sense that it's by teacher recommendation when it's from sixth to seventh grade, and then within the junior high school, what we, our child study process. So, if there's a student who's not receiving any support and is starting to struggle a bit in ways where multiple teachers feel like they've identified a particular area that they could benefit from support, they go through a process where we say to ourselves, is it something where we recommend, you know, extra help, a variety of strategies, things that we can work with families? Or do we need a little bit more formal where they spend part of their day, perhaps during exploratory, working in the ASC, which is right next door? And in that case, depending on what their area of need is, it's not formalized through an IEP, as you pointed out, for special education, but knowing, you know, Gabrielle and Liz, who are the ASC teachers, knowing what exactly is, is the, are the reasons why those students are there, they would sort of make adjustments. And so, you'll see, if you walk in there, you'll see them splitting into some small groups. So, for a certain group of kids, it might be previewing and plotting out a long-term project. Other students who might be reviewing some of the material from math class, it really depends on what they see as the need of the cohort of students at the time.
28 or 30 students to a class sounds huge to me, and they're big kids, you know, they're adult-sized. I'm curious about whether the classrooms can accommodate that?
Yeah.
Or does it feel tight? I'm just-
Can they accommodate? Yes. Is it, is it cozy sometimes? Sure. You know, I think, you know, I'm not worried about things from a, you know, from a JD head standpoint about, you know, too many people in a building or in a space kind of a thing, but I can appreciate that over time, instructionally, and when it's 93 degrees and those large children have varying hygiene practices, it could be tough. So, I would agree with you that it's less than ideal. I'm not too worried about sort of just sheer square footage, but I do agree that it's not optimal for, for learning.
I also want to point one other thing out for history, so people understand that when, we did have larger numbers of students in school, but the, we also had a half-
We had a half-team.
On the seventh grade.
Correct.
That helped absorb those numbers.
Correct.
We don't have that anymore. So, even though they're smaller numbers, there's still a big impact.
Correct. Thanks for bringing that up.
Well, if it makes you feel any better, Amy and I just got back from the M A S E conference on, in Hyannis.
Yeah.
And there are several communities who have seen upwards of 200 English language learners from Puerto Rico land in their community over a very short time.
Yeah.
So, there are many communities struggling with this. Are you at the, like, you say you're, you're well-supported, and that was clear from, from the reports.
Yeah.
Are you, like, where though? Like, are you kind of, like, at what point is this, does this become a problem again?
Yeah, you know, I appreciate that. And when I was reviewing my slides, and I was like, oh, I don't want to, I don't want to come across doom and gloom. At the same time, I don't want to appear sort of, sort of casual about it either. I'm concerned not, I'm really curious to see how the projections play out over the next few years. I do feel pretty good that the projections, at least right now, suggest that there's a little bit of relief, so it gives us a little bit of space to really be thinking about things. But even if these projections play out, I think in five or six years, we're back to, Marie, are we back to mid 900s in about five or six years?
Every year.
But in five or six years, I think it says that. At some point, when we were supposed to be at 700, we're back into the mid 900s. And so, at that point, even if the projections play out and, and we sort of benefit from that, I do wonder when we should start thinking a little bit about that point where we do hover in the 950s more confidently. And I would say that we would need to think about what's the right answer. And to be honest, if I knew, if I thought it was just a matter of throwing money at a problem and say, give us these two or three teachers, I'd, I'd be saying that. But I actually don't necessarily think that's necessarily the case because, you know, a half-team is both a blessing and a curse. You know, it helps with the sizes, and at the same time, you know, there's differences You know, it helps with the sizes, and at the same time, you know, there's differences in it. I have no idea where we'd put them in the building. Exploratory teachers, without getting into details, it's not just a matter of adding a teacher because of the way our schedule works. It wouldn't work with five exploratory teachers, and trust me. So, it's just not a matter, if I knew that just adding an exploratory teacher would help, I'd be saying that. So, I do feel supported in the sense that I haven't said to Bill, or Maria, or Dawn, "I need X, Y, and Z in order to do this." I think we're all trying to really wrap our minds around the possible scenarios that might exist. So, I do feel like we're all aware of the possibilities, and we want to spend some time in the next year or so really thinking about what the right answer is.
So, I just have one question, probably going to go detail, a little bit detail. Math team, not math team, math, different math program gets mentioned, especially in this presentation. For our seventh grade, the new seventh grade right now, there is no skip test tester of those kids.
Correct.
And I noticed area to monitor, and we're taking care of some kids, like, as I have these, I mean, they're, you know? Okay, lower.
Yep.
It's hard to say it's lower end or whatever, but some gets take care.
They need additional support, yeah?
Yes. But for those kids, they're really beyond the definition of extended program. And what kind of strategy you're taking care of them right now? And they could be really challenged sometimes, and, you know, challenging that those kids need extra help.
Yeah. You know, thank you for the question, Aileen. I think what I would probably direct all of us to is some of the conversation that Deb Booker's had started last year, and certainly, I think, continues this year, where overall, not just for a single group of students, but for all students, really shifting our approach to math instruction in general, where if we take an approach where it's not just about helping kids simply with computation and understanding algorithms, but really incorporating and encouraging the sort of a more malleable thinking about math, that that is an area where students of all sort of traditional, strong math abilities can really be challenged. So, it's not just about, hey, can you memorize an equation and then regurgitate it? It's more about changing our math curriculum to encourage and challenge kids to really think about problems from multiple angles. And so, I think that that's where our work really should be invested in, in terms of professional learning and professional development with the teachers, to say, "How can we take concepts that we know we have to teach, but do it in a way that isn't as rigid and really offers a wider variety of challenges to a whole group of kids in terms of how they think and how they approach math?" You know, one of the things that I've often gotten feedback from our teachers is, we have students who, as you point out, are really strong and comfortable in sort of understanding and memorizing and being able to sort of repeat certain concepts that are within math. And I'm just going to preface this, especially those parents who know, who have been through RJ Gray, I'm not a math person, so I'm treading in dangerous territory here. My seventh-grade math teacher would be proud, Mrs. McClellan. But I think beyond that, I think what they're really looking for, and I don't know to what degree she sort of mentioned sort of the practices that are supported by Joe Bowler and mathematical mindsets and sort of math practices, but really, instead of taking a problem that's more traditional, more linear, framing them in ways that offer a little bit more complexity to a wider range of kids. I don't know if that sort of hits the answer the way you'd want it, but I really think that that's probably the best and most thorough way to attack it in a way that's successful for all kids.
Yeah, I think I understand that, but my question is, you know, right now, if all those strategies gets in the implementation, or all the kids in, I mean, seventh grade, they are taking care or not?
I'm sorry, say that again?
They're being taken care or not?
I believe they are. I believe that, I think if you, I think right now, in students, likely the ones you're referring to are probably in our extended classes as well as our honors, our Algebra I classes. I think within those classes, there's a comfort with stretching kids in different ways, and I think that they're doing that.
Thank you.
So, Andrew, I noticed that you took projections from Nezdek.
Correct.
And I imagine that's to be consistent with, you know, the building project that we have going on with MSBA?
I'll admit, is that correct?
Because I'm, I'm, oh, okay. I was, I'm in the habit of looking at the Ashton projections.
Right.
And I was just trying to understand why we're not using the Ashton projections.
I actually think your question is a perfect segue to Maria, because I think, he was asking about sort of the shift from using traditionally the Ashton projections to the shift to using Nezdek projections, which I think is a good segue. No, you're welcome. Thank you, everybody.
A couple follow-ons to that. So, at the junior high, the projections from Nezdek and from Ashton's are quite consistent. And they have, so what we have going for us is Andrew is a planner. So, when he asked me, my answer was, "We're going to be in the upper 800s." And he said, "In five years." In five, he's right. In five years, we start to go back over 900, get up towards between 920 and 950. So, at that time, we may have to think about, you know, another half-team, a little more exploratory, something like that. We're doing more okay right now than we would be doing, because three years ago, we were really carefully analyzing what was coming along. And if you remember, we knew there was this bubble of kids for two to three years in specific categories of needs. And we built in two additional learning centers, and we built in additional academic support, et cetera, et cetera. So, we're doing as well as we can without having added a half-team, which we only would have needed for two years. And given current configurations, I'm not sure where we would have put it. So, I think we've provided some other supports in other areas and so on. So, the segue to, we do have, these are all the different projections we have. And we're doing a lot of analyzing in a lot of different directions. So, we did get, Mary Ann Ashton did the projections for us, the way they've been doing them for 25 years. I think this is the last year they're going to do them, is the answer to your question. So, and, you know, very gratefully, we have had this done pro bono for us from people who did it as a company nationally and actually built the MSBA model years ago, which I think is somewhat different now than when they built it. But you can all hear me, right? The microphone's on? So, I think we are transitioning probably to using the Nezdek projections going forward. In your packet, you have the Ashton projections, they were in the addendum. You have the Nezdek projections, you had them in your last packet. You have the October 1 report, you are inundated with data. We have our appointment with MSBA, it is Tuesday. So, we're going in to talk to MSBA, and we're doing a lot of analyzing of the data. They sent us their enrollment projections based on all the information they gave us. Their projections are lower than either the Ashton's or the Nezdek. So, we're going to go in and do our best to make the case that these are more accurate. So, with that, I'm going to go through them and then give you some examples of what I'm talking about. You do not need to fully analyze, I tried to summarize. So, I have, Mary Ann did this presentation. They are on their way to their daughter's wedding, which is coming up Thanksgiving, so they were not able to come. And I do think it might be nice if the committee were to write them a letter thanking them for their service in this area. So, I'm going to do my best to try to represent the information. And then, I have a second presentation on class size. So, pre-budget season, we sort of give you all the updates on class size. So, I'm doing elementary. Andrew gave you junior high tonight, and at your next meeting, you're going to get high school. So, and you're hearing from all the schools at a meeting during the year, so you heard from Gates already. So, tonight, you had Andrew's, and then, next week, you're going to have Larry and his team, and you're going to hear the high school, what they're working on, and so on, as well as their enrollment class size report. All right. So, and hopefully, you did go through the slides, so I'm not going to try to belabor them, because I'm starting at 7:30, Andrew. Okay. So, overall, we're relatively flat right now, which is not what we anticipated. And so, we have a decline of 22 students in Acton and an increase of 25 in Boxborough, which is flat. Housing turnover is one of the biggest things. It's picked up significantly in both towns, which has led to greater in-migration, which is one of the biggest determinations in enrollment growth. The other thing that you will have picked up, if you read through everything, is the birth-to-kindergarten ratio skyrocketed the last two years. And, again, believed to be from in-migration. So, I'm hoping that's going to have an impact on MSBA, because I think, even though I sent them everything, their model only looks at up to 2012 for things like housing sales and so on. So, we'll see. All right, here's the difference between the projection. I've been talking about this for months now. So, the projection for kindergarten was over by 56 students in the two towns. I've talked about it, anywhere between 52 and 56, depends whether you're including choice or not, and whether you're looking at Nezdek or Ashton's. But in general, in the 50s, out of roughly 300 students. So, we're talking about almost 20%. And you can see by town how this was. So, for example, Acton was projected to have 251, we had 282. And Boxborough was over by 25 kids. And I think we had, I can't remember exactly, 67 kids come, so it was projected at like 43. So, it's pretty phenomenal. Building permits by town, building permits are actually not up. The charts in this presentation are 1980 to 2017. So, what you're seeing is generational patterns here. So, the number of single-family permits actually declined, including the new project in Boxborough. So, it's not building permits per se. This is the birth rate, and it's still going down, which is why I think MSBA's numbers are low. This is why we had such a decline, and we had anticipated such a decline, because the number of babies being born has gone down consistently since the 2000s. But then, when you move people in who have kids, that just changes things. Housing turnovers. This is a monthly chart, January to December, for four years, 2013, 14, 15, 16. It's a little bit hard to read, but this shows you that it really skyrocketed. It started in 2015, that green line, and then the purple line, it continued in 2016, April to September. Interestingly, when it started was September of 2015, that green line, boom! It went right up in the fall of 2015, and then it continued through. So, I have other numbers you'll see. This chart, the blue bar is single-family homes, the red bar is condos. And you can see 20, the top-left chart is Acton, 2014. Then you see 15 and 16 growing significantly, 2017 is on track to be the same as 2016. 65% growth between 2014 and 2016. Boxborough, 2014's not on this chart, so you can't actually see it, but it's a 35% growth from 2014 to 2016, and it's holding steady. Birth-to-kindergarten, this is, it's a little subtle, because it's a 30-year, 35-year chart here. But you can see spikes in a couple of places over time. But if you look at from 2015 to 2017, right at the end here, straight up, Boxborough and Acton are both up quite dramatically. The cohort survival method, you've heard about this every year, that you've heard about enrollment. But basically, the way the projections work is, we look at birth-to-kindergarten, and we average it over a number of years. We've actually shortened the number of years because it's changed so dramatically. So, the Ashton projections are actually only looking at two years of birth-to-kindergarten, because it changed so rapidly. And then, K through 12, it's year-to-year, it's averaged over four years, and it's pretty consistent after kindergarten. And the numbers are pretty consistent after kindergarten. But the kindergarten numbers, I now have three sets of projections, Ashton, Nezdek, and MSBA, and they are all quite different, and it's pretty alarming. I'll give you an example. So, for September, Nezdek says we're going to have 313 kindergarteners. Ashton say we're going to have 305, and MSBA says we're going to have 282. Now, this year, we had 353. And they all said we were going to have between 270 and 298 last year. So, I'm a little worried. Then, when you break it out by town, MSBA didn't break it out by town. Nezdek says Acton's going to have 267, and Ashton says Acton's going to have 238. Nezdek says Boxborough's going to have 57, and Ashton says Boxborough's going to have 67. So, we're going to do our best to plan for kindergarten sections, but we'll see. And what's interesting is, the last two years, we were over by 44 and 54 in two years. We could be down where they projected next year, because sometimes what happens is it's when they were born in the year, because what they're looking at is calendar year births. So, that might be interesting. All right. So, this talks a little bit about the projections, the standard model. The Ashton's do it without choice, and then the charts at the end add choice in, so you can see them. So, by grade, you're not seeing the choice kids, but in the totals, there's a column with and without choice. The Nezdek numbers include the choice kids. Paddock Estates, so it's coming online, total expectation of 40 to 60 students. I want to thank Karen Gazzardi at Boxborough Town Hall, she's been very helpful. I've been contacting her like every three weeks to find out where we stand. So, seven out of 11 buildings are available to be leased. That's 168 units out of the 248. Doesn't mean they are all leased, they're available to be leased. Paddock wouldn't tell us how many are actually occupied. We've registered 26 students so far. So, about 2/3 of it is available to be leased. We don't actually know how much of it is occupied. We have 26 students, 15 families in our schools, mostly at Blanchard. All right. Housing turnover has increased markedly, I already explained all this. Instead of using the four-year, we went down to the two-year for birth-to-kindergarten. And birth projections have been revised. Again, there is a slight increase based on the family, people who have moved into town. And then, this explains the, when we do and don't include the choice students. And so, region-wide, enrollment is flattening, and there is an earlier increase than we thought we were going to have. And enrollment at the elementary level is flat for the next three years, and then begins to increase. So, we were looking at pretty steep downward trends. You've seen the charts, I have them in the other presentation to show you again quickly. We're flat. Elementary is already at the trough or at the bottom. It's going to stay there for a few years and then start to go up. And then, the junior high, we thought was going down to 650 kids. And now, it's at 964, which was a blip up, and it's not going down below 820, 850. And that's a change that much in two years. And what we're very worried about is it continues to change. And then, the high school hasn't, it's dropped 140 kids from the peak. So, whereas elementary dropped 400, and elementary is six grades. High school has dropped 150. It's not dropping that much further. It's going down another maybe 100 kids, and then flat for a while, and then up again. So, it's all pretty interesting. Yeah, so, junior high declines and flattens at about 862, and then starts to go up again. High school goes down about 100, and then is flat for a while. And then, these are the charts that show that, and you can see, they went way down in the 80s, way up in the mid-2000s, and then came down, but nowhere near where they were in the 80s, clearly. And we're flat, so the line is where we are right now. So, this is the whole region, we're already flat. We've been flat for three years, we're going to stay flat and then start to go up again. Junior high, this is that blip, that two-to-three-year blip up. Then, we're going to be flat for about five years, and then we go up about 150 kids. High school. High school really didn't come down that much. Nowhere near as much as the elementary. Okay, so that's the enrollment presentation. I think it makes sense for me to do the class size one and then take questions? Or do you, I'm certainly happy to take questions if that helps. So the percentage of students with disabilities, we've been consistently in the 17% range for many, many years. We're actually at 16.4, the last posted Department of Ed, so I think last year's numbers. So on a percentage basis, we've not grown. In fact, we've come down a bit. Raw numbers are going to go up. But, but we are actually down in students. We're not up in students. So overall, we're down 400 kids, K-12, almost all at the elementary. So our percentage of economically disadvantaged students has grown significantly. So we're at 10% overall. So those numbers are higher. Our English learners have grown significantly, so those numbers are higher. I have those numbers in this other presentation. So, okay? All right?
I think also it might be interesting to point out to everyone that those numbers for the children, kids with disabilities is actually a little bit lower than the state average. So there's been some kind of speculation that our numbers are higher than the state average or that it's an unusual number. But it's actually a little bit lower than the state average.
State average is 17.1%. Last year, we were 16.9 and, or the year before last. And then now we're at 16.4. So we are below state average.
So from the slides, it seems like there's a ton of volatility in the, in the birth ratio, birth-to-K ratio. And there's a ton of volatility in the, in the, in the house market. So none of those are really reliable, like, I mean, so, but well, my question is, is the renters market worth following or is that kind of negligible in these towns?
So first of all, what I would say about, the first thing you said, birth-to-K and housing markets is not so much that they're always volatile, as much as they've changed dramatically the last two years. And I think it's economically driven. So we went from a, a market where houses weren't selling to rapid housing sales. Over 20 years, those are consistent indicators. But the last couple of years, they've been crazy. So apartments, we do also follow apartments. And that's why I loved having our local people do it because we're making the phone calls. And how many people are in Avalon? How many students are enrolled in Avalon? And we're working together to, you know, how occupied is it? How many units are there? How many students are there? What are those ratios? We're doing the same thing with Paddock Estates. We've done the same thing with several units on 2A and so on. So we do follow the apartment market as well. The town halls don't necessarily have strong numbers about apartments the way they have building permits and housing sales. So we take every indicator we can get. I've been asking for census numbers by age, by actual year of birth. And that's kind of a lot of work for both of the towns, so we don't have it. They came back and gave me everybody under 18 and then everybody under six. And we, we would need it by year, but. And Bill did the enrollment, you okay with me saying this? Projections himself in Winchester. So we have an enrollment expert with us. So we've been really trying to look at all of this and figure it out. Okay? All right, so this is the beginning of thinking about the budget and in terms of elementary class size. So reminder of your class size policy, 18 to 20 in kindergarten. Grades one to three is 20 to 22. Grades four to six, 22 to 24. You get that chart in your packet every month, which shows you every classroom in the district and what their class sizes are. Believe me, we follow it very closely. So I put this out for you. Classrooms over class size guidelines right now are mostly at grades three and four. So we have seven at grade four, 13 at grade three. The biggest reason is we got more kids at those grades the last two years that, by far, than we expected. So a lot of the move-in, we certainly had a lot of them show up at kindergarten. But we also had many more show up at third and fourth grade than we would have expected. We've added a classroom at third grade and fourth grade in the last two years. And even with new classrooms, that's where we're over class size guidelines. And when I say over, we're at 24, 25. We're at, so the third, the third grade classrooms are at 23 and 24. The fourth grade classrooms are at 25. Okay? We have two at kindergarten that have 21 in them. And we have one at grade two that has 23. So we have 122 classrooms. 23 of them are over class size guidelines, mostly by one student. That's 19%. You're about to hear our plan to remedy, to have a plan for everything to be within class size guidelines, assuming we can manage it with the budget. Interestingly, somebody asked us at the last meeting, what did it used to be like 10 years ago? Or when we were at peak and so on? So I pulled out 0910, which was the elementary peak in Acton. The peak in Boxborough was earlier. And 78 classrooms were over these class size guidelines out of 108. So 72% of them. Most of them were 24 and 25 kids, but first grade on up were 24 and 25 kids. So it's kind of an interesting trip down memory lane. So the year-to-year growth, I thought this might be interesting for you. So the way to read this chart, the first column is the number of kids we had October 1st, 2016, K through six. The middle column, the number of kids we have this year. So the first row is kindergarten last year to first grade this year. You get what I'm saying? So K to one, we got 13 more kids. Well, that's a really interesting number because we've averaged 28 new first graders every year over the last, as many years as I've been doing this. So hmm, we got a lot more kindergarteners the last two years, but we got quite a bit fewer first graders. I could give you two reasons. One would be because we got so many more kindergarteners. Maybe it's a birthday thing. The other is we have rapidly increased our all-day K, which might have been a big reason why people didn't come here for kindergarten and came in at first grade. So an interesting dilemma. First to second though, we got 43 new kids. That's a huge number. Second to third, we got 16. Third to fourth, we got 18. In the second, third, and fourth range, with typical year-to-year growth, you would expect nine to 12 kids. So 43, 16, and 18. So that's where a lot of the in-migration is coming, second, third, and fourth grade. Same thing was true last year. And then eight and six at fifth grade and sixth grade. All right, so in your packet, those of you who've been around a while, this is my favorite little chart thing I do. You'll see it in the budget binder. I've kept it for 10 years. I have 10 years into the future. I decided not to go into the future beyond two years from now because the enrollment numbers, we just. But, so this is 2017, 18. And then the next page is going to show you 2018, 19. So basically, what was the projection? What do we really have? And what was the difference? So from projection, kindergarten, in these numbers, these include the choice kids, staff kids, et cetera. There aren't any choice kids at the lower grades. It's just staff kids. But the difference, 54 kids at kindergarten, 19 fewer at first grade, 29 more at second grade. And then the rest of them are closer, between five and nine. So pretty interesting. All right, how many sections do we have? I honestly feel like we did a pretty good job budgeting. You might remember, we budgeted an extra K. We budgeted an extra section and said, we're going to put it where we need it. We wanted to maybe put it at third or fourth, but we had to put it at K because 54 more kids. So we budgeted one 4K on purpose. We had a new first grade on purpose. And then we had a spare just in case and we put that at kindergarten. So that made our Ks and ones right where we need them to be. So it's third and fourth that we're kind of worried about. And third grade across the board is 22.8. Doesn't sound that bad. That's because it's lower in Boxborough and that brings the average down. But it's actually 24 in Acton, almost across the board. And then fourth grade is 24.4 in both towns. All right? Fifth and six are as good as I've ever seen them, honestly, 23.3. All right, this is what we're planning for next year based on current numbers. These projections are Nezdek's. There are some variations with Ashton's and we'll keep watching that. So what we would propose for kindergarten is to continue to have in the budget four Ks for Blanchard. So if you remember, what I said was the Ashton projection has 67 Boxborough K and the Nezdek has 57. If we get even 57, we're going to need four because you're going to need three classrooms plus room for growth. And with hometown guarantee, I wouldn't be comfortable putting 20 in and then not having room for any more. So I think unless we get under both of those projections, we'll probably go with four Ks at Blanchard. We're planning to go with one fewer kindergarten at, in Acton than we have this year. So we have 353 total this year. The projection's 313. The other two models have fewer kindergarteners. So right now, we're going to budget one fewer kindergarten than we did last year, this year. And what I mean by that is McCarthy Town took on a fourth kindergarten, so we'd put three there. And everybody else would get the same. So Gates and Douglas would continue with two Ks. McCarthy Town, Miriam, Conant would have three Ks and Blanchard would have four. All right? So then, other than that, we are proposing adding a fourth grade. We're not sure where yet. We're talking about space. Probably Conant or McCarthy Town. And then fifth grade, you remember the class sizes that are over from the previous chart? We're at 24 and 25 in every single fifth grade in both towns. So we're proposing adding a fifth grade to Blanchard and to a school in Acton. That we're not 100% sure which school that will be either. Okay? So where we were over on the prior chart, all right? Current third and fourth grade, we're proposing adding one classroom to the current third grade next year and a classroom in each town to the current fourth grade. And that should get everybody in class size guidelines. So it's a good question. We're actually adding four and taking away two. So two overall. Yes, exactly right. Yep, yep. And that's what this chart shows, is how many in each school. So we're actually going from 2,712 kids to 2,706 kids. So it's almost exactly the same according to the projection. We're just shifting them a little bit. But we're adding two classrooms to Blanchard. And we're a little worried about that because there isn't a lot of space. So we're working on what that's going to look like. We're looking at things like case and some other things and we'll see, see how that goes. And then we're looking at two classrooms in Acton. And again, we're looking at space and we're not quite sure. Because we have two at several grades in, in a couple of schools. There are places where we could put it, but we might have to give up one of the all-day Ks because we've grown into two all-day Ks in every school. And so we're, we're kind of manipulating that. But in your packet, this chart comes from this. So those two slides are here and you'll be able to see them. And it highlights where we're adding sections and where we're removing sections. Douglas and Gates are each losing a section because the two sections are coming through the school. So we reduce two sections and then we add four. And that's how it comes out. So that's going to be our budgetary recommendation as of right now. So I know that took a little time, but I wanted to sort of explain it all. And it basically gets us in class size guidelines. And here it is all highlighted in color. So the yellows are where we're adding and the greens are where we're reducing. And we're reducing because Douglas, as an example, has two kindergartens and two first grades this year. They'll have two K one and two next year because they're moving through the school. Okay? Gates has two kindergartens this year. They'll have two K and one next year. Now the hope is if we can move forward with a building project, we can start to plan and grow those schools back to three sections. Because we don't want to keep going with two and we won't be able to keep going with two forever. So far, so good? Any questions about this? Okay. All right, demographics. You've heard pieces of this. So this slide talks about the enrollment by race across all the schools. And I mentioned this last meeting. Conant has 67% of the students are Asian-American students. And Gates, 57% of the students are Asian-American students. So we're seeing more growth in a couple of schools and sort of decreases by race in other schools. So there's more disparity across schools. Whereas we used to be more 35% across all the schools and maybe one school had a higher number. It's, it's just kind of interesting that way. Our Hispanic students are growing and so on. The next chart shows economically disadvantaged and English learners. So I gave you numbers and percentages. These are our two populations that are growing and have grown. If you compare it to 10 years ago, remarkably. So economically disadvantaged, 10 years ago, we were at 2.5%. Now we're at 10%. If you look at it by school, Gates is at 15%. Conant is at 11%. McCarthy Town is at 12.7. Significant growth, really, we need to think differently about how we work with some of our families. And we're really working at that. English learners, 10 years ago, we had 86. Today, we have 260. So we're at 8.4% at the elementary. I didn't do the K-12 percentage because naturally the junior high and high school have much lower numbers. So if I did the percentage, the K-12 percentage is 4.5%, but the K-6 percentage is 8.5%. Remarkably, in this category, if you look at it by school, Conant has 55 students who are English learners. That is 12% of the students in that school. Gates has 61 students who are English learners. That's 51. That's 15%. We have two classrooms at Gates that have more than 12 students in a single classroom who are English learners. One at kindergarten, one at second grade. And it's, some of it's just how it played out, and that we don't even know that they're English learners until school starts. So a few more charts here. This is the history of kindergarten, just so, as big as 353 is, it's not huge historically. So, these are just all the kindergartens for the last 10 years or so. This is the number of classroom sections going back to FY '07, and what we're planning for. So, you know, we peaked with 136 classrooms across both towns. Our student body has changed significantly, so we don't have 136 classrooms anymore, because we have many more programs for different student subgroups. And that just talks about this. We've reduced 14 classrooms in 10 years. So we have definitely reduced classrooms for enrollment drops. All right. This is in the building project presentation as well, but it talks about the growth in kindergarten over the projection the last two years, which I've told you about several times, and the growth in housing sales in Acton and Boxborough. Again, 65% in Acton the last two years, 35% in Boxborough the last two years. And then, this is the chart you've also seen. So the bottom line, which is blue, is what we thought was going to happen from FY '15 to FY '25. We thought we were going to lose another 1,000 kids, 100 a year. That was two years ago, that, those were the projections. Then last year, the projections, we still thought we were going to lose 500 kids. Now we think we're flat and growing. And this was, this is K12. Similar for elementary only, which is where we're looking at a building project. We thought we were going down 500 kids two years ago, 200 kids last year. Now we're flat and going up 200 kids in the next five years. All right, I think I went backwards, or double. And then, this is the square foot capacity chart, that's also in the building project presentation. Based on MSBA standards in today's world, what our schools are supposed to have in them, Douglas is supposed to have 270 kids, we have 427. And two years ago, we had 470 or so. So it's 157 students over capacity. That does not include the modulators. The capacity of 270 does not include the modulators. Gates and Conant, capacity of 300, and they have over 400. If you add up all the schools, the elementary schools were over capacity by 428 kids today. That's a school. And we're not adding a school, we're just trying to replace two schools. So those three slides are in the building project presentation. So that's it. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. So it was very detailed. So you go to MSBA on Tuesday? And what is the message to them? And what more are you going to give them? You already did.
So, the purpose of that meeting for us will be to emphasize the additional data we provided them. We now have it in presentation form. We won't be making a presentation, but we'll bring these slides, so that we can visually show them what the trend has been the last two years. As Marie had indicated previously, their model, their model really doesn't take into account recent trends for communities. So I think, I think we have the data that clearly shows that there's a discrepancy. And my expectation is that, I'll be surprised, well, let me put it this way, I will be surprised if, when we have an opportunity to personally present this data, and then talk through it with them, that, that, that they will, they will, they will make adjustments in their enrollment numbers, and will then settle on an enrollment number for, for the project.
Okay, follow. Okay, so, we additionally gave them data that they were, as part of the whole process. And then, I remember coming back on to the board in September, and then I believe that you were, at around that time, you were granted the ability to give them additional data then, correct? That data just passed over, that data wasn't presented, from what I can tell? Right? It was just given to them, for them to plug into their mathematical models, and then they come back and say, what, was it a little, was it better than what they had before, or no change to what they had before?
So, our timeline was such that the enrollment data we submitted, it was due by July 3rd, so it was last year's enrollment data. So when I told them that the, the number of kids we actually got this year were so dramatically different than the projections, they agreed to put off our deadline and wait for our official October 1 numbers for this year. So that's what I sent them. They had preliminary projections in July, but I can't get back to them, because it, they wrote over it. So I don't have what they had then, because it's this system, I couldn't print it out. So, I don't really know how much it changed from what they had then. So I don't know the answer to that. What I did, what I am almost done preparing for Tuesday, is a graph that has, I'm concentrating on elementary, because that's what our project is, the graph of the projections of Nezdek, Ashton's, and MSBA, and how much lower theirs are. What they're interested in is a 10-year average, so 2017 to 2027, and they've done that average. And Nezdecs and Ashton's are about 250 students higher than MSBA in the 10-year average. So I think that's what we'll concentrate on, and try to get them closer to that.
So, Amy, I just have two things. One, Bill, one was for Bill, and one's for, well, maybe the both of you. But for Bill, have you been through this before? I mean, if you had this happen, where you've had to go back and personally present numbers, and the second one would be, worst-case scenario, if we're forced to stick with their projections, what does that do, from a school-building perspective?
I have indeed, on two occasions, for two different projects, an elementary school and a high school. Their original projections for our elementary school project, which was 2011, they were projecting, that they were partnership in a school for 360 students. We had submitted data and had requested to build a school of 480 students. So they, they asked for additional data, which we provided them. And then, as a result of our meeting, we were able to increase that enrollment capacity to 420. So they allowed, they partnered with Winchester for a 420-student school, versus their original indication of 360. And then, for the high school project, we had, we had data that suggested that we needed an enrollment of, it was, I believe, 1,440 students. They first came back with an enrollment of 1,170. It was quite a difference. So again, we went back, we reminded them of the data we presented. This was in 2013, just two years earlier for our elementary project. And they did make an adjustment. They adjusted it to a school of 1,360. What did I say? Did I say 1,365 originally? No, no, they adjusted it to 1,220. So, so that's what we had to go with. Interestingly enough, and this is one of the frustrations I know that districts have with MSBA's model, the, the high school, the completely finished high school in Winchester opened just this past September to 1,222 students. And their enrollment is still projected to increase. So, it's, it's part of the process that they use, so, but I am confident that we will see, we'll see a change in what the MSBA, in the numbers they sent us just this week. But there's no guarantee, and we're subject to, we're subject to their, to their model in the end.
So here's the good news. Our plan provides flexibility for us in this way. So, we've planned a twin school plus preschool classrooms. And then, we've planned, seven years from now, Conant. So, if they don't go any higher than they currently are, so, our projection, which is higher, is flat for the next five to six years, and growing up to 200 students up to 10 years from now. Even with their numbers, we're going to have several more classrooms than we have now, under MSBA guidelines. So we're at a minimum, going to have a Gates and a Douglas with 21, three classrooms at each grade in the building, and spaces for special education, and so on and so forth. We can tell them our special education needs, we can tell them our preschool needs. Those aren't based on enrollment numbers. So we built into our plan eight preschool classrooms. If we are really worried that we don't have enough K6 classrooms, we might say we need 10 preschool classrooms. They told us, they, they'll listen to us about what we need for preschool. Now, I'm sure within reason. I mean, we're partnering with them through this whole process. So, we'll have some classrooms that will be swing space, whether they're special education classrooms, or preschool classrooms, or, you know, breakout spaces, things we don't have in today's world. So, I think we're going to be all right. It just might mean, the next project has to be bigger than it would otherwise have been. To some extent, we're already talking about two schools with 500 kids, 450 to 500 kids, plus eight preschool classrooms. Even if they gave us 200 more kids in the enrollment projection, I'm not sure we're going to build it much bigger than that. Does that make sense? So, there are two sides to this. There's the enrollment number, but then there's the reality of how big we're going to build this building anyway. So, I think what it really will impact is the next project.
Marie, you kind of answered a question that I was going to have, and that was the comparison of the three different projections. You don't happen to have that slide, do you?
I don't, because I'm not done with it. We just got Tuesday, one set, and we got MSBA's on Friday or Monday, so, we're getting there, though.
Yeah, I'm just curious to see that all.
And I honestly didn't really want to put out MSBA's projections, because I think they're temporary. This is just their preliminary, this is for the meeting.
To the earlier question and comments about what MSBA's earlier projections are, remember, we do have, in our packet at one point, we saw, they were older, but MSBA, Nezdek, and Ashton estimates. And then, we as a committee voted on what size we were going to go for. Right? It was like a grid, and we took from here, and here, and here. I can find that.
Yeah, yeah.
And I, just if we want a little bit of history.
I think that was before MSBA did the projections. I think that was Doran Whittier giving us...
Oh, did they do MSBA-style projection? Okay, okay.
All right, thank you, Marie.
Thank you so much.
Dave, you're up. Or you're there, either way. No problem.
So I've got four items under number seven. So, you have in your packet a memo from me with some backup for student activity, relating to student activity funds. I think the memo's self-explanatory, and I'm going to ask for a vote in accordance with school committee policy. You may be aware that the committee already voted the minimum or impressed balances at a prior meeting. In my transition, this vote, this vote that I'm asking for tonight got overlooked. Next year, I think they should probably be done at the same time. I'm going to be arranging with the audit firm for a review of the junior high school student activity account funds later this year, and so we'll present that report when, when that work is completed. Only three schools in the district have student activity account fund checking accounts. This, among some other questions, was asked of me by Diane. I've spoken with Diane just before this meeting. I'm preparing answers to her questions, and I'll send my responses to the entire committee when that's, when that, the answers are all documented. In general, I believe we have adequate controls in place regarding the custody and the oversight of student activity account funds. If you have any questions about the materials that I've presented, you can feel free. Otherwise, I'd respectfully request the motion in accordance with the wording that's in the memo.
Okay, so I'm looking for a motion to approve the accompanying lists of proposed student activity, activity funds for Blanchard Memorial School, RJ Gray Junior High School, and Acton Boxborough Regional High School, each as recommended by their respective building principals, as the officially recognized clubs, teams, and other organized student activities for the 2017, 2018 school year.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Yep.
I noticed, on the list of the student activities, there's an advisor there, and there's usually a name, but there were a couple of that had TBDs. And my question is, does that mean that the, the group doesn't get to meet if they don't have an advisor?
The, the information that you're seeing was sent to me, was available during the summer. And so, again, it was, it was my shortcoming to not have this all pulled together by the time I made the first report. So I'm, I'm making the assumption that they have since named an advisor for those activities.
Oh, okay, great, thank you.
But Paul, that is a requirement. For junior high and high school activities of any sort, they have to have an advisor in order to run.
Would be sad to see if they didn't have the advisor, then they couldn't, they couldn't do the activities, so, okay.
You interested in some?
What's that?
Do you want to do some?
Oh, you bet.
Bridgette.
I, I had a similar question, and this actually might be a question for Mr. Dory when he comes to present for us, but I wondered what financially active in that last column means? Does that mean they have funds?
That, so, in talking with Karen at the high school, she said, though, it means, what it means in, in English, that there's active monies being taken in and expended for those particular activities.
Okay. And I wonder if some of these might be clubs on the books, but they're not active.
That's a possibility, too.
Possibility. So that might be a question for Mr. Dory.
Yeah, for Larry.
When he comes back to us next time.
Okay, all those in favor? Opposed, abstentions? That passes unanimously?
Thank you. The second item will be, I'll go into it in a little bit more detail. Again, you have a five, it's the fiscal 2018 first quarter financial report. You've got a five-item report in your packets, consisting of an overview, analyses of general fund revenues and expenditures, and then year-to-date summaries of revolving in gift funds and of grant funds. If we look at the overview, it's pretty high-level. It's very preliminary, as I've noted. We've had an opportunity to do two passes to project salaries and special education, two of the more volatile cost categories in the district. So, there is some comfort with me, with me saying that we're projecting now a budget surplus of around $600,000 at this point, at this point in the year. I think there's minimal risk of projecting revenues. A lot of the revenues are known, whether it's the town member assessments or the state aid, that's the vast majority. That's the vast majority of the district's revenues. And so those, those are pretty well-known at this point. I think it's notable that the projected surplus at this point is in the vicinity of the planned use of E and D funds for the feasibility study. Something to keep in mind. If we go from the overview to the second section, that's an analysis of budgeted versus projected revenues. If you have, if you printed it in color, if you're looking at it in color, you'll see that I put in red any items where there are variances to budget. All of the variances are, are explained briefly in the notes at the bottom of that, at the bottom of that analysis. If there, I don't know if you want to ask questions before we flip each page or at the end. So if there, without any hands, I'll keep going. I'll keep going. The third section is a three-page analysis of budgeted versus year-to-date expenditures, whether expended or encumbered. I've shown projected variances in the subtotals by category. Most of them are rounded because these projections can be pretty fluid as the year goes on. I included on the third page of this section explanatory notes regarding the variances. And I just want to make sure that I did, right? You have, this is a three-page section with notes to expenditure status update. I'm hoping that you, you did not get the notes, then. Looking at this page right here. No, so I... Well, this, I guess, I guess I looked at this and in preparing notes for tonight, I looked at it and I said, this doesn't look like something I'd said, I'd send out, but it's in the, in the packet. So I can really briefly go down the list of the projected variances and, and I'll try and keep this in to a minute. Salaries, based on, we're projecting an $80,000 negative variance based... You don't have the notes. So I'm summarizing, I'm summarizing the notes right now. Because I think there are some things that I just want to make sure that you do understand are included in the, in the variances. So the salaries were based on a collaborative review by the HR and finance departments through September. It's tighter than it's been in the prior year, mainly due to new hires for this year being brought on at significantly higher on average than the standard budget rate for, for new hires. And also fewer retirees than had been planned, than had been experienced in the prior year. It also notably includes the severance agreement with, with Dr. Brand, the former superintendent. So that cost, that projected cost is built into that particular variance. Okay? Fringe benefits and instructional supplies. I've projected both of them positive by about $10,000. They're trending positively, but too early to be projected with any great precision. I put a modest amount in green, and green is good and red is bad, to indicate that there's an apparent positive trend. Okay? Capital outlay, I'm going to talk about this in a, further in a second. The projection represents the savings on the Leary Field project. The cost came in under budget. And I'll, the $100,000 savings relates specifically to Leary Field and I'll, I'll have a further comment in a second. Facilities is historically under budget on a net basis. Maintenance and utilities combined. We'll try and better align that budget with cost in the, in the 2019 budget proposal. Legal services, I put this one in at a, at a significant projected variance based on the trend year-to-date. And if the trend continues, that's where I think we're going to be. Administrative costs, same as above, a small slight positive variance based on trend, but nothing of any real significance to hang my hat on. Special ed and regular transportation, we'll delve into these in more detail in the next report after Q2, but way too early to put anything of, of significance for those two cost categories. However, special ed tuition, we had some favorable, favorable experience regarding a particular student and family versus budget. So we, we've cashed that in, if you will, in the variance to, for a significant amount of money, $250,000. Obviously, a very volatile cost center. Dawn and I review this periodically to, to update our projections. And so that variance is going to be subject to change. The assessments, we've booked the cherry sheet assessments from the final state budget. And so that's not an estimated number, but an exact number based on the cherry sheet. The final number might change, but that's, that's a good enough number for me at this point. And so I said I'd come back to the capital projects. We currently, we currently expect capital project spending to be more significantly under budget than I showed in this report. You may recall in my first report a few months ago, I estimated this to be several hundred thousand dollars favorable. We aren't showing that yet, as there may be an opportunity, if the remainder of the projection holds or even improves through the, through the remainder of the year, to consider using that savings toward further action on the capital improvement plan list. So keep that in mind. It's not that that variance has gone away. There's a possibility that we may come to you and want to utilize that variance toward the CIP list and we'll keep you updated on this as a strategy. That wraps up the general fund. So questions to this point? Okay. The next two are a lot less detailed. The fourth section is a summary of special revenue funds. In a lot of districts, this information often, often never made it into the public eye. Was pleased to see at AB that it's been part of the standard reporting package. And so you, you get this information with the, with the financial update. I'm in the process of reviewing program finances with each of the respective department heads just to gauge the projection of their results for this year and also for budgeting purposes for next year. So that's where we stand in the revolving funds at this point. Lastly, there's a section on grant funds, similar to revolving funds. These weren't always included in district financial reporting. And, and so you have them summarized for you individually. And actually, the budget line items are presented. I would consider making some change, a change to this report. I don't know that you need all this detail, but this was the, what's, what's been done historically at this point. I'm happy to answer any questions about any aspect of the reports or welcome suggestions regarding presentation format, et cetera. And know that I expect there'll be a more detailed and comprehensive report at the end of the second quarter. There'll be much more substantial information with which to accurately project FY18. In the meantime, we're on to FY19 budget development. Okay, thank you. And what a segue, FY19 budget schedule timelines and guidelines. So you have two documents here, the budget schedule, the fourth line, fourth line in. I have an arrow on my end that says you are here. So we did the enrollment and class size update and we're having the school, the school committee discussion of the schedule and guidelines at this moment. The next, the coming attractions are the month of November during which the central office will meet with the department heads and building principals for the, for the reasons set forth. The typical, the typical how the sausage is made in the budget process. And then the school committee first budget presentation will be on December 14th. It is not likely to be the end-all and be-all budget discussion with all the bells and whistles, but a, a check-in as to where we stand and where it looks like we're going to be for presentation of FY19's budget. And as far as budget guidelines, this is a draft. It's intended to be a working draft and collaborative means of, in the, in the words of the budget subcommittee, telling the budget story. And so you've got, excuse me, seven bullets listed that are intended to be the underpinning for the budget presentation. Excuse me. The underpinnings of the budget presentation and how the, the numbers within the budget come together. And so how the school committee itself or the budget subcommittee, which meets next week, avails itself of, of getting into these guidelines is not my purview. But it's, I, in talking with Bill, we, we put this out as a draft so that we can be nimble and reflect either changes to some of the direction embodied by these guidelines, add things that we, that we missed or delete things that are, don't give rise to as higher priority. So it's out there at this point in time. Okay. The last, the last item is a very brief presentation about other post-employment benefits or OPEB. And I believe, I don't know that you've had information on this in the past. You, you've got an extract from the report that was presented to us by Bartholomew and Company, the investment advisors. The report goes into a lot of details about the specifics of invested funds. The extract that I sent you is meant to give you an overview. It does, I didn't send you the individual investments that, that are being held by Bartholomew for our benefit. Margaret Dennehy, you may know as, as district treasurer is the custodian. There's a four-member advisory board of which myself and Amy are, are two members, as well as two members from the FinComs of both Acton and Boxborough. OPEB is a growing issue. It's included in the audited financial statements. Richard Sullivan from Powers and Sullivan may be, may be providing some commentary at next week's school committee meeting on that. But I can tell you that the district is really well-positioned with respect to the OPEB liability, with respect to the funding toward the OPEB liability, especially in relation to other districts generally and other regions specifically. Masbo recently did a survey in which I participated. And we are not at the top, but we're very close to the top as far as level of OPEB funding. It is a liability that is real. It's not one for which you get an invoice anytime soon, but it's a real liability. And to the district's credit, you have taken some substantial steps toward addressing that big liability. And that's my report.
Thank you, Dave. I'd like to make a, just very briefly, a couple of comments. I want to first thank Dave and his staff for both the completeness of this report and then Dave personally for the clarity in which he's presented this material tonight. Dave will tell you, well, this is the way it's been done and I'm just kind of following how it's been done before. But, but, but the clarity in which you presented it, I think, is, is really very high quality. And then last, I also want to echo Dave's comments about the completeness and the, and the scope of the quarterly reports that you receive to include the revolving funds, the special funds, the, the grants. It is, it is impressive and it's, it's excellent practice. And it's very transparent. So I'm very impressed with that as well.
Thank you, Dave. I've, when I look back at the timeline, so Budget Saturday is the 27th. But we're not getting the budget binders to the 23rd, so four days before. Did that, did that match up with what, last year? Or did we have them earlier? Or, or did you have them earlier, I should say?
I think we, we get detail along the way, but the official binder usually comes just four or five days before Budget Saturday.
I thought we had at least a week in that.
So we put in the timeline the Tuesday before the Saturday. We have the last two years been able to give it to you the Friday, a week. We'll do everything we can to get it to you that Friday. I think we just, we have the meeting on January 11th and then whatever decisions are made after that have to be replicated and we have to finalize what goes into it and so on before we get it to you. The governor's budget comes at, you know, so we'll, we'll do everything we can to get it to you the Friday before.
Yeah, I mean, I, I get that it's a, a lot of work to put it together and I totally understand it and appreciate the amount of time that goes into it. But it's also a lot of work to actually analyze it and get through the numbers and try to formulate your questions and be ready for a, you know, a pretty clear and, and intelligent conversation.
We'll change that date to the Friday before. And then if we have to add anything, Tuesday, we'll, we'll do it like an addendum. But we, we can get you the binder the Friday before.
Yeah, just because it, I mean, it takes me a little bit to get through it.
Yep.
Thank you, thank you, Marie, for doing that.
And I'll also say that 90% of what's in it, you will have already received. In fact, several things that were presented tonight will go in that already and so on. But we'll get it to you the Friday before.
I just want to also say that this is probably, I really appreciate Dave's presentation tonight. It was really clear. I was able to really kind of understand things at a level that maybe I haven't been able in the past. So thank you for that. Paul?
Yeah, no, and I appreciate the, and I've seen this before, the report on the OPEB. What's nice to see is the earnings are, are building up. They, I mean, I remember last year and the year before thinking that it was a small contribution, but now I'm beginning to think that the, the earnings are making a substantial contribution in and of themselves.
Absolutely.
I was going to point out the same thing. I mean, it's hard for me every year that $800,000, $900,000 of the budgets going into OPEB just to sit there, but we've made over $300,000. So at, at least that's great. And just a reminder to, if we keep our commitment, I mean, not only are we doing well in terms of other communities, but keeping the commitment for a steady contribution is viewed very highly when we're rated. And so, and I'm half talking to myself because it's a hard commitment to keep, but...
All right, thank you, Dave. There are no more questions. Moving on to school building committee update, Mary.
Okay, so we're moving along. We're making lots of presentations. We have a lot of support among town committees and we're working on educating, informing and building support in the community. We continue to post our material on the website and we have our Twitter, Instagram and Facebook account. Our Facebook account in particular is very active. I didn't write down the numbers Adam said last night, but I think he said we have 7,000 people following, which is great. I mean, no, or maybe it's 7,000.
I think it was 7,000.
700, no, there's not 7,000.
Yeah, no, I was like, ah, no, there was, there was thousands of, of impressions. I mean, but I don't think it was...
Yeah, so maybe it's 7,000 hits on the page. Because it said 7,000. I know that number, so maybe it's that many hits on the page. Yeah, yeah, so. So one thing we talked about last night though, that I want to bring before all of you and is, is actually at-town meeting. So we're going to have two concurrent town meetings. The decision is that Dennis will present at the Acton Town Meeting. I will present at the Boxborough Town Meeting. I will present at the Boxborough Town Meeting. We will have our committee members there, the school building committee members representing their, like, being in their town so they can vote. And then we have members on the school building committee who don't live in either town, and so we've talked about who might be where. The question is, who sits up front for the meeting? And we are thinking that it would be the members of the school building committee who are at each meeting would sit up front, rather than the school committee itself. I am absolutely open to hearing a different viewpoint, but we thought if questions come from the audience and we need to field them, that we want Marie, JD, Bill with us to help field those questions, and that maybe those of you who, many of you have come to our presentation but haven't been integrally involved in it, that it might be harder for you to help field the questions.
It's, I think it's totally appropriate to have the building committee members there just for that purpose, so.
Thank you, Mary. Yep, go ahead, Paul.
I do have a question, and I hate to ask this one because, but I'm, has anyone thought of answering the question, what if it doesn't pass?
Well, we talk about it in our presentation, and, I mean, the answer, there's a couple of answers. One is that we fall out of the MSBA eligibility period, and so we're no, they're no longer a partner with us. And then, as a community, we need to decide how we handle that. We could do a full building project and fund it 100% on our own. We could step back and say, we're only going to do what's on the CIP for those schools, and we have a slide on that. And I could probably dig through and find it in this, I carry this pile, but I can't get through it quickly enough to find anything. It's a difference, it's a lower cost, but the, it's only a 10-year fix, and it's only a fix on the facilities and infrastructure and not on the educational space and needs. And so it's really what I would consider a short-term solution. So the difference there is with the, a full school building project, the net cost to the region would be about $60 million, given the estimates that we have right now. Repair and bringing in everything into ADA compliance would be about $39 million. And again, only a 10-year fix and not addressing educational space needs. So that's something the community will need to decide how they handle. Yeah.
So I've seen the numbers. What I'm more interested in is the opportunity lost for educational purposes?
Yeah, I think there's a significant loss. I mean, we've heard for now a year and a half, two years, from Doran Whittier about the educational challenges. It's not just, when we're talking about new building to address these spaces, it's not like to have these futuristic classrooms that are going to be absolutely amazing. It's to take kids out of the hallway for occupational therapy. It's to take a room that's divided, that's a temporary space and divided into four spaces and having four concurrent groups going on at the same time. It's to provide small group spaces for English language learners who can't learn 20 in a classroom. And so it's to address the needs we have today. So it would be a significant impact to addressing those needs.
Thank you, Mary. Moving on to item number nine. Marie.
So I think many of you knew, Ed Kaufman has announced to his faculty and his parent communities that he will be retiring at the end of this year. There's a memo in your packet after 23 years with the Marion School, 13 as a teacher and 10 as the principal. And he also has a long career before that as a counselor and an elementary school teacher, and teaching, counseling, and education courses at the university level. So that's going to be a big change for Marion and for Acton/Boxborough, and we wish Ed well through his transition. We are beginning the process to form a committee to hire the next principal of the Marion School. And so there's a timeline, schedule. I put the dates right out there because I think people are busy, and so if people want to volunteer for the committee, it's good to know when the meetings will be. So I have not distributed that yet, but I will distribute it probably tomorrow morning to staff and parents, and we'll get that out and invite people, I'll give a little more time than I think that memo says, for people to volunteer for the committee. And then we start to meet in December, and we'll get rolling. We've done lots of principal searches, and we have a good process that involves the whole community, and we should be through the process in the February timeframe to be competitive with all the districts that are looking for principals. I don't know if Bill has anything he wants to add.
I think that, I think the process is very clear. I think it's a very good process, and the timeline is right on target. And, you know, we'll have plenty of opportunity as the school year winds down and a new school year starts for Ed to be involved in the transition with the new leader, whoever it is. So I think we're in good shape in that regards.
Just one question. On that particular search, who makes the final decision?
The superintendent.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to the permanent...
I'm a Marion parent, and I'm going to miss Ed.
Okay, so moving on to the permanent superintendent search, our meeting, orientation meeting with NESDEC is scheduled for Monday, November 20th, at 7:00 PM here in the junior high library. They're going to come and do an outline of the process. I am going to ask that we, that they come prepared with an ad so that we can do, we can vote at that meeting on the ad, then it can be placed right away if everybody approves of it. Okay. Do you want to say something?
So Amy and I had just talked about this yesterday, and in fact, we received earlier today a draft of a position of a vacancy announcement. And there's some information that they're asking staff, the school committee and central office staff to kind of put together to fill out. So there's a full draft of that. So at the central office level, we'll work on that, and then I'm hoping middle of the week, send it out to you all so that you'll have an opportunity to weigh in, make suggestions, and we'll kind of put that together and have it ready for Monday night on the 20th, when Dr. Beckencourt will be here, along with the two consultants, Dr. Bent and Dr. Dias, as well. They have indicated they need about 90 minutes. The intention is that it will be, it'll be, that'll be the lone item on our agenda. It's really more like a workshop, and we'll, I'm excited that this will really give us a really good jumpstart into the process.
I just, I did want to remind everyone that when he, when the feedback is requested, that you only send feedback to Bill and not to the entire committee, just for open meeting law purposes. Okay, so moving on, subcommittee reports. Bridgette.
So a couple of things on the Budget Subcommittee. There's a set of minutes in there from our July meeting. We'll put the minutes in for the last meeting we had, once they've been approved. We do have a couple of things we're asking the school committee to do tonight for the Budget Subcommittee. One is to approve the charge for the Subcommittee, which we realized was technically never done when the Subcommittee was set up a few years ago. So you'll see a draft of that in the materials. And we're also asking that the school committee appoint Diane as a member of the Budget Subcommittee. She's volunteered, thank you very much, to join the Subcommittee, and it will help round us out in terms of Acton/Boxborough membership. So that's the second thing we're asking for tonight.
So I'm looking for a motion, and thank you, Diane. I think you're going to be a great addition. Thanks for doing this.
Move to appoint Diane Baum on the Budget Subcommittee.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Okay. So did you get that, Beth? Okay. That was, yeah, Mary, Paul, and unanimous.
And then the second thing is to approve the charge.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Okay, great. Thank you.
Thanks. Our next meeting's next Wednesday.
Okay, so Policy Subcommittee. Nope, Maya wasn't feeling well, so she...
I got it.
Oh, Katie, thank you.
She handed it off. At our Policy Subcommittee, Subcommittee meeting on October 20th, we reviewed the nine policies in your packet. It's a consent agenda, so they're on for a first read tonight, with a second read and a vote planned for the next meeting next week. All of the edits were fairly simple. They were still mostly just holdovers from regionalization. So we'll read through them. Policy IKF, graduation requirements. GBJ, personnel records. GCIA, philosophy of staff development. GCJ, professional teacher status. EBB, first aid. IHB, programs for students with special education needs. IHBF, home or hospital instruction. JIE, pregnant and parenting students. And policy JII, student complaints and grievances. So if anybody has any input, please send it. But, oh, Paul has a question on one of them.
The graduation requirements, what was changing?
I don't believe anything.
Can I give you a little background? So when we regionalized, there was a Subcommittee that went through all the policies. Mary, I think, headed that up. There were a group of policies that they held to the side because they were specific to certain administrators or departments, and we're just now sort of going back and looking at them. This group of policies are having no changes or very minimal changes, really just going from Acton Public to Acton/Boxborough. So there's nothing, really no changes in these policies. That's why they're on the consent agenda.
So now I remember something that I used to bring up every year when this came up. Are we really only required two years of math? I know you asked this question every year when I was in the committee, and everybody would be like, just two? That's it? We still, we're still doing that? Just two years of math? Just to graduate, and then two years of science, but yet four years of English and three years of social studies?
I remember, I remember Mike asking that question, and it was asked and answered, and this was voted.
So, dear Dennis, so it hasn't come up every year. This policy was updated, I don't know, five years ago or something, and there was quite a discussion at that time about that. It was updated to include the arts requirement at that time. And, you know, there's a lot of process around a change to graduation requirements and a lot of, you know, talking to other districts and what other districts are doing and so on. The requirements are for all students with all types of needs, no matter what they, what their learning styles are, and so on and so forth. And so I read, you know, the high school principal, Deb at the time, you know, for some students, these are heavy-duty requirements. And so this vote, this change right now is from, is to the region. There's no change to graduation requirements. If you want us to go back and look at graduation requirements and reconsider the math requirement, we can bring it back. That would be a process that would involve the high school, but this is really just to change it to the region.
I don't know if I'm just reading it funny, but under academic elective requirement, it says one additional year of English, social studies, math, or science, or a third year of a world language, but there's not a world language requirement listed. I don't think. I mean, unless I'm reading it incorrectly.
My interpretation of that is for those students who have been taking a language or who have taken two years of a language, they can take a third year of a language to meet that, to fulfill that particular bullet.
Okay, but there is not a foreign language requirement, according to this, correct?
According to this, there is not.
Okay.
Diane?
Well, so while Dawn is here, actually, I'm going to bring up file, the policy IHB, programs for students with special education needs. My question is regarding the inclusion of 504s in this. The language in here is really, it's in the statute for, the Massachusetts General Law 71B, an IDEA, right, an IDEA. But there are certain things that don't apply to the 504s, like IEPs and the child find. And then the statute uses plan, the word, I don't know if this is significant, but it uses the word plan for 504s, but program in IDEA. So I was wondering if we should maybe take it out, or is it okay to keep it in? What is your recommendation?
So, great questions. The word, so it's funny, the P in IEP is program. It's not plan. And it's actually, it's one of my favorite words because in the IDEA statute, the only time you will ever see the word program is with the I, the individual program. And so I always share that with our special educators to help them understand that when they say, well, Paul's going to go into the resource program, or Katie's going to go into the learning center program, the only place where that actually occurs is with the I, meaning for each student, we're going to develop a program that's unique for that particular student, which may have resource support or learning center support or one of those things. So it's one of those words that people, over time, have used the word plan. The word is actually program, under the federal statute. So that was a particular change that I made, and that's one of those things vernacular-wise that I've been working with staff with. Section 504, so students who have IEPs and who are eligible under IDEA also have all 504, section 504 of the Rehabilitation Act protections, they have both. Students with, and an IEP is a program for specially-designed instruction, because the nature of the disability is such that they require it. A 504 plan is a general education plan of accommodation, so not services, not anything like that. It's literally about access, and they don't have IDEA protections, they just have 504. So this is a very specific one for students with IEPs. So it wouldn't be appropriate in this one to include 504 because it's a general education plan. I don't know if that, I think that should answer your questions, probably.
So your recommendation would be to take it out? Because it's in paragraph two.
Yes, 504 should not be in there.
Okay.
Well, no. The reference to the requirements of the IDEA, section 504, the rehabilit, that has to be in there because kids who have IEPs or special education needs have both protections. So for them, it's appropriate.
Okay. And is it worth clarifying any of that, or is this...
I think it just muddies the water.
Okay.
I mean, I can take a stab at it if you want, but...
So I saw Amanda had a comment, but this sounds like that was that comment. Is that, okay, yeah, okay.
Yep. So it took me a minute to get to it, but Tess's question, that, that particular requirement is an elective requirement, and the elective requirement can be in several areas, one of which is a third year of a world language. We don't have a world language requirement separate from that, so... So you already said that? Is that how you said it? I'm really sorry.
It's okay.
But I'm going to also remind us, we did vote a, what, is it a certificate of bilingual literacy?
Yeah.
That students can earn. So it's another kind of motivation, if you're really doing well with those languages, to hang in there.
Okay, so this is not a vote, this is all a first read. So if you have any other questions or comments or changes you need to, that you would like made, please send those to Katie or Maya. Next, regional financial oversight, Mary.
So as you may recall, as part of the full regionalization, we created the Regional Financial Oversight Committee that is to monitor finances over five years. This year is year four of five. And so Mike Coppolino has been on that committee with me. And then Christina was going to take it over. So I need a new partner. Although someone recommended that maybe Dennis would take it on, I, I was talking to Amy and I need someone this year and next year. And I thought it was just easier to educate one person, give them the history. And so I, I would like to appoint Amy to that position and then she would stay on it next year. So if everyone agrees with that, then that's what I like to do. And just to remind you that each town has a representative from their FinCom and Board of Selectmen, as well as two of our school committee members on that.
I move to appoint Amy to the Regional Financial Oversight Committee with gratitude. I'm not sure how this works, but all those in favor? Opposed, abstentions? Thank you very much, thank you. Okay, moving on to, ah, my glasses, ALG. So ALG met on October the 26th. We had some discussion about just generally budgets. It was agreed that the budget reviews would happen, more detail would come out at our January meeting. And that the FinCom had a couple of suggestions, but we would take those under advisement. So I don't really want to kind of go into detail with, about those because we're still kind of, I think, everybody's still kind of playing around with those numbers. The other piece that we spoke about was the E and D, the whole reserves replenishment. So there was some discussion about how reserves are replenished each year. So there's some concern amongst the FinCom that we would be running out of reserves. But when we went back and looked at the last three years, the rate of replenishment, the rate of use and replenishment is about 3 million. So we're, we're replenishing really mostly what we use. So there's still going to be more discussion about that. Marie had a nice chart, I think, is it in here, in our packet of the replenishments? Nope, that's okay. Nope, okay, all right. And that's all, unless you want to add something about ALG? Okay. So, and then the minutes and materials are in here, so you can take a look. Now, Bill.
Thank you, Amy. Next item are, is two donations that we'd like you to support. The first is described in a memo from J.D. Head. It relates to the installation of a new ultraviolet pool sanitizer. As J.D. explained, there was a larger project being done related to the pool earlier in the summer that provided an opportunity to, to install this new pool sanitizer. And the Patriot Swim, Swim Club has generously donated almost half the cost of that piece of equipment. And it's, it's a, as I understand it, a significant upgrade in terms of what this piece of equipment provides to all the users of the pool in terms, most especially of the user's health. And then the second donation is actually asking you to approve three grants that the high school has received from the Acton-Boxborough Regional PTSO. The first is a $2,000 grant for a wellness initiative, a $1,000 grant for student leadership workshops and career speaker programs, and $800 for, for the provision of a window seat.
I just want to note, Window Seat is a literary poetry magazine.
Oh, thank you very much. I was unclear of that. So when you talk about building a curriculum, give me a hammer and nails and I'll build that curriculum for you.
I'll, I'll move to approve the swim club donation of, is that $10,000? That's $10,000? And the, should we do these together? Okay, I'll leave it at that with gratitude.
Favor? Opposed, abstentions? Okay.
I'll move to approve the PTO, the PTO grant for wellness initiative, the grant for student leadership workshop and career speaker programs, and the grant for the window seat.
All those in favor? Opposed, abstentions? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Amy. Next agenda item is the open meeting law complaint. So on October 30th, in open meeting law, the district received an open meeting law complaint from Mr. Stephen Ballard. As per the Attorney General's Open Meeting Law Guide, school committee members have previously received a copy of this. It was posted as part of the packet of this complaint. And, and in addition to receiving it, said complaint must be reviewed by the school committee. So in, in order to do that, I'd like to summarize for you the complaint as, as the review portion. The complainant alleges that the school committee violated the open meeting law with respect to its executive session meeting on October 19th, 2017. Specifically, the complainant alleges that the open meeting law was violated due to three items. The first is improperly posting an executive session meeting outside the 48-hour notice requirement. Secondly, such notice and the announcement by the chair in the meeting were insufficiently specific as to the alleged purpose of the meeting. And third, there was neither pending litigation nor imminent litigation justifying the executive session. In response to the complaint, the complainant requests the school committee to take the following action. The committee should immediately, within one week of the filing of this complaint, provide both the AG and the relevant individuals whose alleged litigation was discussed with unredacted minutes and all documents used in the executive session. The committee should negotiate with the relevant individual or individuals to take corrective actions with participation of the AG, which should assess fines of $1,000 for each intentional violation and order other corrective actions as appropriate. So further, in terms of what the complainant is asking for, the school committee by, as per the Attorney General's guidelines, has 14 business days to provide a response to the complainant. And that would take us out to, a response would be, needs to be made by November 17th. So I would, based on that, I would recommend that the school committee, through the chair and the superintendent's office, consult with legal counsel in determining the school committee's response to this complaint. And that can be done through a motion.
I move that the school committee respond to this complaint through the chair and the superintendent's office and consult legal counsel.
Anything else you want to say?
No.
All right, well, that, that concludes our agenda for the evening. Oh, Dave.
You see, the first FYI is FY17 end-of-year audit reports. I have them here. If I had gotten here on time, you'd have had them at your tables. Please feel free to stop by and take a set. There is the basic financial statements, the report on federal awards, and the management letter at next week's meeting. Hopefully at the beginning of the meeting, Richard Sullivan from the audit firm will make a brief presentation about, about the audit. And as you all know, audit presentations are riveting entertainment, so I would urge you to get here at the beginning of the meeting. Thank you.
I also did want to add that there is no need for the executive session that's listed on the agenda. So that will be, we won't be doing that this evening. And I'm looking for a motion.
Move to adjourn?
All those in favor? Opposed, abstentions? Thank you.